Okay, one side I totally forgot to, okay. The show.
So we have to call, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:15 and we have the first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Which we did.
Which we did already. We were late on the, starting the recording. So the next thing is the old business, which is the review, discuss that open space plan. So that was the, the section nine, I believe we were talking about reviewing the goals that we had.
Ellen, is the approval of the minutes, the last set of minutes on there?
Yeah, it was down as the last thing on the agenda, or one of the last things, number six.
Perfect.
So Brett, you were gonna share this, the document with us?
Yep, bear with me one second. And it's just section nine that we want to see? Sorry, it's be, the screen, it doesn't let you minimize, so it just takes me a second to find something when we're in the Zoom.
Yeah, we were looking at the actions, Brett, and I think one of the things that's come up, I've actually been working with town committees. Your municipal vulnerability preparedness committee, we're actually doing a regional addendum with Somerset and Swansea. So we have a couple of other actions to add in there or revise. And then I've also been in contact since the last meeting. I told you guys, I think the update that Jeff Carvalho and I had with the state as far as extending the trail, I've had further meetings and it looks like that's, that's a go. They're gonna put out the RFR for that, so now we can cut back on some of what Dayton's responsibility would be for extending the trail, put it back on the state, and that way, Jeff, we could channel other resources to him to work on other portions of the trail in town. Plus, Tom Ferry has gotten the grant and actually completed the work on it since we met last.
Oh, wow. Awesome. I didn't know about the grant.
He got one of those safe spaces grants to add to accessibility to areas. Like, I think in your case, it's the plaza down off of the center of town, right off of Pleasant Street where Giorgio's, you have the restaurant that's now Giorgio's, and that plaza right there to increase access and public accessibility. But he also put something on the other side of the street that would be kind of like a trailhead, right where the rail's gonna go into Sweet Snoll, and I think he put up share the road signs too, to go along with the, yeah, the trail signs. Yes, so that's fabulous. I mean, hey, make inroads any way you can, even while it's being developed.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
The document, okay. And then as we go, whoever's gonna guide the discussion, will you just let me know if you need me to scroll down or? Let me know, because I can't see what I'm sharing. My apologies. Thank you.
Oh, that's so funny. Okay, so yeah, so you know Brett, I think we can only see up to number five on the action plan. Yeah, there you go. Now we can see six. Okay, so what do you guys want me to do? What do you think is the best way? Should I read them or just let you guys?
Didn't we go through these, Ellen, and like?
I thought we did.
Yeah, let me see what I, let me go grab my stuff.
Yeah, it's so hard when we've been so long since we met.
This will be actually good though, because it gives Kevin time to look at them as well. Kevin, I'm gonna send them to you right now, as I'm not, I can't remember if I sent this specific document, section nine, to you.
No, you just did.
Okay, perfect.
I'm looking, I got it pulled up on my computer, so I can kind of read along with you guys.
Perfect. And Jess is just gonna figure out where.
So we went through this document. I thought we added some stuff to it, but I don't see anything.
I thought we added something about, did we add something about the, the town, like cleanup day?
Yeah, we had talked about that. Yeah, that's in the latest version, okay.
Yes, this version that I have up on the screen is.
When we were talking about it. Bill?
Pardon?
Did we make those, we went through the document, didn't we, and made changes to it?
Yeah, only a couple, and I've got those down. So what we can do now is the changes that I'm gonna have coming out of the regional MVP, I got a second meeting with them this Wednesday. So that'll be all set, and I've spoken to the state to follow up on what Jeff and I talked about, so that's all set. So after this Wednesday, I should be able to send around a revised action plan to all of you guys.
Perfect.
And the last time we were talking about green infrastructure too, and the fact that you guys had had a, a deep bylaw review already done, and there were some recommendations for green infrastructure.
Their plan, their suggestions, out of bounds suggestions matched very well with what we had already discussed.
Right.
I was so, I was so happy about that. I was like, we're, we did really well with that.
Yeah, and like I said, actually, you guys are gonna be the first ones if, I'd like to complete this before the end of the year and send the draft open space plan in for certification, conditional certification, and then we can wrap up everything that we have to, you know. There's always gonna be a little, couple little things in there, but you guys will be the first town in the state to have green infrastructure provisions in the plan. And I've also put together a green infrastructure map that we're going to marry your conservation parcels to, so that'll be an extra map for your report that's not required, but we're gonna have it. And that way, you guys will have options to maybe pick up what they consider critical green infrastructure, either through the MVP program, or through the DCS program, the people who certify this, or a couple of other programs out there that actually make land grants to communities who are looking to either retain their local resilience capacity or increase it.
So the one, the only thing I, Ellen?
Yeah.
Number 29 to add the filing cabinet.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Our lotticles.
So we need to do that.
Well, actually, if, if we're really gonna add that, I think the time would be now, Jess, in all seriousness, because old selectmen's meeting room in town hall is being converted into an office space for the town accountant. And then there's a general office space for anybody on a board committee commission who doesn't have an office, who needs a space, there'll be a computer desk in there, et cetera. There will be filing cabinet space in there for committees to hold documents. So we might actually really want to consider having a filing cabinet in there.
I agree, because, you know, things change, and I've got all of this stuff at my house where it should be somewhere where if something happens, you guys can get at it.
Yeah, I'm in the same situation here. I have a lot of old documents.
Well, I have those now.
I think we should add, add that we should have a space for a filing cabinet for the open space.
You know, that's, that's a great point. Almost every community that I deal with, guys, is, is there's a, there is a file cabinet at a minimum. You know, a lot of times Conservation Commission will run, so they just stick it in their files, but otherwise, there is a file cabinet in the town hall at a minimum, for the very reasons you guys are suggesting.
Right, Bill, because you know how much we had to hunt things down that had been done already?
Yeah.
Only to find out that it had been done already, so.
Yeah, it took us a long time to even get a complete plan of the old open space plan.
That's right.
Remember that? We had to, I, I think you eventually came up with it, Bill.
Yeah, so what I think you should probably do, I agree, bag that action right now and do it while it's available, just, just pick it up and have a home.
And then the only other thing that we starred was number three. And I guess, improve opportunities for, I guess we were wondering for what at Horton and Chestnut? Just.
For walking and that kind of thing?
Is it walking trails or biking trails or?
I think we were discussing the opportunity to create shared use paths there.
Okay.
And if we did, we'd have to accommodate ADA.
So can we add like a little piece in there that says, you know, what those opportunities are? I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely, because a lot of these I pulled out of the, the meetings that we had with all the boards, and I used their words, but we can, we can enhance this to show them that this is probably what, you know, you would have to do, or this is what you mean.
Right, just so that we are all on the same page, because it was just a little vague.
Yeah, no problem.
And then number, so can we, how do you want to change that? To improve opportunities for walking or for?
I would put for shared use paths and accessibility.
Okay.
Potential development of shared use paths and accessibility at Horton Street and Chestnut, yeah.
And I, I know Brett knows this, but I don't know if the rest of you know this, but I'm also on the ADA commission, so like, I can help translate some of that information as that plan progresses.
Great.
Oh, that's fabulous.
Yeah, so then you guys can, you know, if, places where you can tie your plan into our plan and it'll help.
Right.
Stronger.
But just so you know, we met with every board and we asked questions of every board and then came back, and that's kind of how we built this.
Okay.
With all the information from all the different committees.
Yeah, we met with Conservation and Planning and Zoning and Parks and Rec, CPC, we met with, yeah, there was like six or so.
Kevin, would you like me to pass that on to you? I have it all summarized in like, like a seven-page memo.
Yes.
All the boards and all the questions and their responses are separate. That way you can, it'd probably be better for you to tie it into your ADA plan that way, because you may have specific sites that you're looking at.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know if, if some of these areas, so the ADA commission is relatively new, we just started like about a month ago.
Oh, okay.
And there was a town audit, but it mostly pertained to like our, our buildings and like playground areas, not so much like this town property that would, you know, is, is forest or trails. There was a little bit on there, like on Broad Cove and the parking areas and things like that, but it doesn't touch too, too much on it, but um, at least I can, you know, translate the requirements if we are, you know, building trails and going to parking areas.
That's why we're putting all this in, so that people are thinking about these things before they just jump in and do something, that they are thinking of the ADA accommodations.
Actually, Kevin, do you have that report?
Uh, I do. I can share that with the group.
That would be great, because that's the kind of thing we actually need in one of the appendices, and I knew that you guys had gotten the grant from the state. I gave Mallory some stuff when she was writing the grant. And I'm glad you guys got it and finished it, because a lot of people got stonewalled because of the shutdown. I know a couple of towns got them late last fall and didn't get started, so now they're trying to catch up, you know, right now, before the end of the, the grant term, so that's great.
And then number nine, we talked about a little bit. So.
Brett, can you scroll down to number nine, please? Yeah, there's nine.
Perfect. So the action was to incorporate provisions for shared use paths and development process whenever and wherever, environmentally and economically feasible. So I, I don't know if we thought that that might give people an out. Do you know what I mean? Whenever and wherever, so it's.
Can you elaborate, Jess, just a little bit?
So whenever and wherever are words that get people out of doing something that they should be doing, because it's whenever and wherever, so if they say, oh, well, we can't do that now, but it says whenever or wherever. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so can we make, yeah, how do we make that, I hear, totally hear what you're saying, that people can, yeah, just throw up their hands because they don't want to deal with it.
And maybe if we have grants, people won't use the money in the, this action, because it says whenever and wherever, they might, you know.
Maybe we just, um, maybe we just make the sentences stronger by taking that part out, just say incorporate provisions for shared use paths and the development process.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to make it.
Well, that's not technically, that, that line isn't technically incorrect, because
That's right.
So as a town property, if you can't make it, so it's shared use, if you can't make it ADA compliant, we would just have to file a variance for that property.
Right.
Um, so that, there's truth in that, in that, in that line, that it really is whenever and wherever environmentally feasible.
Yeah, and that, that, that's how it comes up when we do bylaw reviews, so Kevin, you gotta look at a purpose, means, and reasonableness. Same thing with, you know, like regulations. So what you do, you, you place that in, you can say, we strongly recommend or consider this, and you say wherever and whenever economically or environmentally feasible, because it may increase economic constraints on the developer, it may put constraints on the town as far as services you'd have to supply, but it makes them at least go in and take a look at it.
All right.
Whereas under your existing regulations, they don't have to at all, even if they're up against a piece of conservation property, a town-owned property.
Okay.
And now you're saying, hey, we'd like to increase access to our property through here, and if you can give us land in the back and, you know, do the shared use path, we'd love this.
Okay, so that was all of our comments for number nine, for this number nine, action plan nine.
All right.
So we'll keep it as is, this particular one?
Yeah, if that's the way that the wording has to be, then that's, you know, we were just thinking, I guess Ellen and I were thinking that people might say, oh, we're not gonna spend money there, and we don't have to, because it's whenever.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, okay, yeah, no, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, I can see how in places where, you know, a walking trail, maybe where it's going up the side of a hill, where you might not have something.
Right.
Yep, and a lot of times environmentally feasible, a lot of developers, when they go and do this, they'll say, sure, I'll give you my back forty and you can put a trail through there, and then when you see, you say, just try to, it might be all wetlands.
Exactly.
Yeah, land you wouldn't want to touch otherwise, so, but you've given them a break because they've done that, so it, it's good. That way, everybody gets a clean view of it.
Did we have anything else, Jess?
That was it.
Okay.
And coming in now too, Kevin, if you want to read through it, you know, even after the meeting, read through, and you see anything that you'd like to either amend or add, or especially coming off of the consultant's report, you think should be in there, feel free, just shoot us an email, we'll, we'll see.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'll have a little catching up to do.
I wanted to ask a quick question on this. I know, Bill, you had said you have a meeting, you're waiting for some feedback in terms of a finalized action plan. I know the ADA commission is a recommending body, they meet, I think bi-weekly. So my suggestion would be that we, I know the open space committee did its due diligence in getting the feedback of every board committee and commission. However, the ADA commission is relatively newer, and before we vote, do we want to wait to hear back if the ADA commission, after its review, and again, they moved fairly quickly, because they got back to the custodians of the community garden pretty quick on their plan. Um, and then they can, you know, they may have feedback before this committee finalizes its plan. How does the committee want to proceed?
Yeah, um, yeah, as long as, like, we kind of set a goal already as, for the end of the year to have this, well, do you think it would delay it? Beyond that, like, so if the process is that we're gonna put up a draft plan, right, how much more time is there for comment?
No, I think, I think we could do that, Ellen, we could definitely let the ADA commission look at this and comment on it, and then everything else should just roll right into it. And like I said, I'm having my second meeting with the regional MVP committee this Wednesday, so I've got some of their recommendations in the can, they just wanted to finish up as far as partners and potential funding, and I can throw those in, and then I can get a revised section nine as soon as I get the ADA comments, and that should be it. Everything else should be ready to roll.
All right, that sounds fine, then.
Our next.
And I, I, I didn't mean it as like, we didn't do our due diligence, it's just that they're new, and the other thing is,
Yeah, no.
I'm also, I'm not used to having an ADA coordinator and an ADA commission, and so I'm also trying to get into the habit of, before finalizing, anything that we get that input from them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, yeah.
I, I agree.
But I don't, I think that what Ellen meant was that, you know, we want to get this out, and it just took so long.
Yeah.
Get to this place, you know, I, I, I don't think, I think it's smart to wait for the ADA commission to go through this, because they're gonna be the board that really takes hold of everything.
So our next, the next ADA meeting is not this Thursday, but next Thursday, so um, I, can I take this and, and suggest that it gets put on our agenda, Brett?
Yeah, um, do we have a more, Bill, I guess this is for you.
Yeah.
I think I have everything in pieces. Is there some way we can send them like the entire document, rough draft document, and then you can give us their feedback?
I can send you the pieces that would be pertinent to what you guys do, Kevin. That, that way you wouldn't have, you know, have to read through tons of stuff that wouldn't be related, but I can give you the stuff like, especially sections seven, eight, and nine, because that's where it discusses community needs, goals and objectives, and then actions. So you guys would fit right into all of those things, and I think it really is wise to have the ADA to comment, because that's one of the things that DCS looks for in the final plan. Do you have a local ADA commission? Do you have the policies, you know, and, and have you reviewed these facilities for what their needs are? So that's, that'd be right up your alley.
Okay, so it sounds like it'll make the plan a lot stronger.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
So I'll send that to you, Kevin. I'll send you section seven, eight, and nine, you guys can put that on the agenda and go to town.
That's great. Thank you.
All right, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, so are we done discussing section nine? So do we need a, uh, we don't need to vote on anything, right? Or, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna move on. Uh, so we have new business. We received the spreadsheet for the current list of town-owned land.
No, I bring that up.
Yeah, sure.
I don't care, okay.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. Yeah, I haven't yet, I haven't yet had a chance to look at it, to be honest. I printed it up and then I realized it was twelve pages and it wasn't on all one page, and I was like, uh-oh, that's not gonna work.
So this is from May 28th, so I do want to caution that this list may, we may have purchased and/or sold a couple of things. We did have an auction, like we did sell the house next door, for example, not the land, just the house, but we did acquire that land, so it should be reflected on here, so one.
So you're talking about the town hall, the, the house next to the town hall?
Yeah, yeah, nine four nine.
Oh, so someone, someone bought the house, someone's gonna move it?
I believe someone did purchase the house at the auction.
Wow.
So it will not be torn down. I believe it will be moved, which is.
Oh, that's nice.
Well, after hearing Jess talk about it, I'm amazed.
It must be, I know, I can imagine. And everyone can see the list that I'm seeing?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Now you'll have to direct me, and I guess, you know, our conversation will dictate how we.
Um, I wanna get like, I'm a very visual person. Can I get a map of the town? Hold on.
Yes, I do want to also point out to the committee that I did obtain the list of town-owned land, the map from the town administrator today. Obviously, we're not all together, so it's a little hard for me to show it to you right now. It is on my desk in the selectmen's office. If anyone wants to borrow it, review it, that is where it is. And also, that is a little outdated as well, that map, so we have purchased.
Didn't we have the map, Bill?
Yes, we've done an update, but one of the nice things about this is with what you've given me here, Brett, and the new green infrastructure map that we put together, I'm gonna go in and buy parcel, pin town-owned land, and especially Conservation Commission-owned land to the green infrastructure, because that's, that's the kind of thing the state, through the MVP program and stuff, they would love to see. They would love to see town land enhanced with potential purchases.
Fabulous.
Or donations, which is again, where you could get a developer too, even if it isn't for an SUP. If they're, they're gonna develop near a piece of town-owned land, and this piece, a piece of significant open space, green, identified green infrastructure, you could ask if they consider donating that to the town's resiliency, you know, basically fund or stash your land too, or enhance town-owned holdings, so that's what we're gonna do off of this parcel information, I've given it to my GIS people.
Yeah, and then we were gonna look at, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that we were gonna look at the line along the rail to see if there was any land that open space could can, help consider purchasing.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that it would be a, a bike path or a walking path down into Somerset.
Right.
On the, on the old railroad?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, we were looking at that, and we're, we were looking at it going north and south, and we're also, we're also looking at the potential for a boardwalk.
I love that.
That Bill Fournette wants to do, going out to the high, high ground.
I love it.
In the middle of the marsh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's nice.
That's.
Actually, we would connect from Taunton.
Yeah.
All the way into Somerset.
Isn't, no, that's, I'll save that question for a different day.
No, actually, I know.
It's about Taunton, it's really about Taunton, so it's not really the purview of us.
But right now, what you have is on-road going from Somerset Riverside Avenue to Water Street in Dayton, to Pleasant Street, up behind Giorgio's, and it's gonna go right into Sweet Snoll State Park.
Yes.
And, and the information that, well, I said, we got from Paul Janegy last month, and I got again, a couple of weeks ago, is that they have every intention to develop all the land that they own, and nobody knew that when they got Sweet Snoll State Park, they got the entire two miles of railbed, so he's gonna develop up behind Dayton Town Hall, all the way up to Sandpiper Lane.
Wow.
Which is anchored by a piece of town-owned conservation property at the end of, at the end of Sandpiper Lane. So that's gonna be huge.
Yeah, that'll be really nice. So I'm really curious about some of these properties that have some acres and not, and they don't seem to be owned by a conservation or have anything on them. Like Oak Street here has, there's a thirty-one acre lot on Oak Street. How do we find out what the status is of these lots? And like, is that something that we could do, review these sites and see, do they have conservation value or value for recreation?
Well, that's one of the things we actually have to put into the plan too, off of this, I'm gonna see. To the best of my knowledge, from what I've found so far, you guys have never gotten a grant from DCS to buy land, right?
Never.
Never, no, there's no state grants involved, which really surprised them too, because they always think, I'll send it back, because we want to know how you got your land, it's, it's all been town purchase or donation.
Yeah.
And that's, which is, that's amazing in this day and age to them, especially because you've gotten so many good pieces here. And then the other thing they would like to know is what would be the potential use? Should they give you money, grant money? Say you applied for a grant on one of these pieces of conservation land. Would you want to do passive recreation, active recreation, you know, boardwalk, shared use, some stuff like that?
So I, I guess Ellen's point would be to get an eye of what exactly it looks like, I don't know, right?
Yeah.
To see if what it could, the use could be.
Yeah, to, to evaluate some of these properties, you know, to, because in my experience, when they're not labeled like this, then they end up being possibly sold off.
Right.
So if they're not actually identified as a piece that Conservation wants, then they get reviewed by the Land Use Committee, and then you could find them sold off, and, and so it seems to me it's important for us to go through this list and decide if any of these parcels meet our goals, and to find, and then to find a home for them, if, if they belong under Parks and Rec or Conservation or, or whatever. Because like, yeah, like this is a pretty significant piece of property here, it's almost thirty-two acres.
Some of that stuff though, and obviously when we, when we're looking at the map, it will, it'll be much clearer, but like when you get in the areas of Oak Street, Horton Street, that, there's a lot of power lines, gas lines, things like that out there that, although the town might own it, but there's really not a use for it, and it
Right, yeah.
Can't sell for that reason, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally see, I totally know what you mean, or some of these parcels. Or, uh, some of these parcels could be a parcel that is an interior parcel.
Yes, right, like no frontage.
Yeah, it has no.
No access to a road.
Right, so it might be a parcel that would be good for recreation, but then you've got to purchase.
Right away.
And, or, yeah, or, or a lot or something to get in there.
And so Kevin, when we first started this, we sent out, um, questionnaires to families. And one of the most important things for families in Dayton was, uh, recreation, areas for recreation. So, um, you know, to help out with that would be something, would be great.
Brett knows I love recreation.
I do. You know what I was thinking too? Does that, just in general, that Oak Street Maple Swamp Road area? They don't have a park in that West Dayton part of town, do they?
No, it's just the baseball field.
That baseball field, but that's not, I mean, that is recreational, but I'm talking like slide merry-go-round, you know, the.
No, there's, there's nothing out there.
Yeah, it might be a nice way to get, you know, when we get down the line, that might be a nice guiding light for us. As a way to get public support for purchasing or keeping or not selling or purchasing a contiguous piece of land, um, specifically for a park. They're trying to redo the North Dayton Playground, which is in the village part. Um, you know, that Prospect Street, School Street, uh, area of town. Um, so they're asking for 200, I believe, $20,000, um, for some equipment. Um, so I think that this is a, this is an issue where we would get a lot of support. But, you know, obviously we would have the plan that we passed, you know, sort of guiding these things, um, in these decisions, so.
And it would be nice if the ADA was involved because the playgrounds really aren't.
No, I know.
Handicapped accessible.
Well, that was one of the big things with the North Dayton Playground and we did receive those plans. And it is, you know, quote unquote ADA compliant, but like it didn't check off all the boxes. Like it was, it was a lot of money for a bare minimum to just appease like the rules, but not really.
Yeah, I think in Cranston, Rhode Island or Warwick, they have a fabulous playground where they have wheelchair swings and things like that. I think it's important that we, that, that's looked at.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of how I tie into really both of these commissions is that's kind of my goal for town. Is, and I don't know if you've, if you've ever driven through, um, the Route Six area, when you go from New Bedford into Fairhaven. There's a pretty popular playground called Noah's Playground, which is absolutely unbelievable. Um, so, and that's kind of what I'd like to be able to bring to the town. Cause actually my, my oldest daughter is wheelchair bound and not just for her, but we do things with, um, DR, um, Pop Warner Cheerleading and Football, so like we have a ton of friends who are, you know, handicapped and that's kind of, so that, just so you guys kind of know a little bit more about me and how I tie into this. So that's kind of my, uh, goal for town is to not do the bare minimum.
Because the one behind Town Hall is so, it, it must be impossible to push a wheelchair on.
Oh, it's a good time getting, getting over those.
Not really, but you know, like this, I think it's so important that we start looking at that and looking at the, the ground and how, you know, people aren't burning their feet. But using materials that, you know, out of recycling and.
We just went through this whole thing too with the, um, the community garden proposal was helping them formulate a plan where anybody can use it and surfaces for paths and around the beds and all that stuff. So that's gonna tie into pretty much even all of this stuff with the trails. There's gonna be certain areas where we'll have to use, um, different materials than what would be, you know, traditional for trails if we're gonna make it ADA accessible.
That is terrific, that's really.
But I do, um, along those lines, I do just want to say, um, it seems the general sense that I have of the town just, and when I say the town, I mean like the townspeople, it seems like everybody is very supportive of this. And I think people know that ADA compliance isn't free. Especially since a lot of our infrastructure in town unfortunately was built without any of those considerations in mind. Um, but it, my general sense is that people do want us to move in this direction and I think they know it's right. And I think we obviously know it's right, so, um, I think the ti, that, the time to do it is now, strike while the iron is hot, so.
Yep, and there's so many grants out there that.
Right, exactly, there's gonna be, and that's the thing is you gotta be aggressive with trying to obtain grants. Because Brett, you know, everybody, everything seems like a good idea until you tell them how much.
Of course.
Well, uh, it's not that good of an idea.
But I will honestly say, the, the good thing and the thing that I see is when you bring people along, when you're doing what we're doing on this committee of having a plan. Um, people can see and touch the plan and they know where you're trying to go. I think things are more likely to happen in terms of the approval of expenditures and things like that. Uh, when, when people know what you're doing, um, and they know you have it together and you've been working on it for a while. So I think things are coming together really well.
Yeah, so.
Wish we could look at a map together.
So when the, um, when the, when we have a draft plan, is there, what's the process for, we, you get submitted to the state? Is there a process that happens in town? Do we talk about it to go ba, back and shop it to get like approval from the selectmen and?
Bill, I thought, I thought that, um, that this committee would approve the open space and recreation pla, its open space and recreation plan. And then it would go to the planning board for their approval to be added to the broader master plan?
Yes, it does, it would, it gets, um, you need letters from the Board of Selectmen, or the rep, uh, the planning board and the regional planning agency, those are the three minimum required letters before you can send in a draft.
Okay.
And then once you send in the draft, the state will review the draft and Melissa Cryan, who reviews all the plans for the state. She will send back a letter of review to the town if for some reason, and I've never seen any community in Massachusetts do this. If you hit all the buzzers and whistles, she'll say, congratulations, you know, we'll consider this your final plan. Otherwise she'll say, hit, in this section do this, in this section, sometimes I've seen it just a matter of sentences. You know, semantics, the whole bit. And I think the fact that, um, one of the things you referred to too Brett is the fact that this has been such a really open and public process where we've actually gone before all the boards and taken the time to do it. Over several months, you know, accommodate their schedules, but to make sure that they knew what we were doing, why we were doing, how we were doing. And we had specific questions coming off of a survey, I think they'll be very pleased with that. I mean, it couldn't have been any more open than that. And now, you know, Kevin getting your board to review it before we send it in too and get your comments, I, I think that'll be great. We'll be, we'll have won a lot more of the preliminary work than most plans ever do. You know, they hold public meetings, general meetings and kind of, the boards usually wave the cape at it. But we went in with specific questions, so I think this will serve you guys really well. And then once we do that, we make the fixes and then you get certified. But while you're conditionally certified, this is the thing, you can actually apply for grants.
Oh, fabulous.
While you're conditionally certified, the thing is you need complete certification in order to get reimbursement for the grants. But you can still get a grant.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, while we're under conditional certification, you have all the time in the world to work on the corrections. So you, it, it's the best of both worlds, you can finish your plan while you're actually in the grant cycle.
Cool, okay, and when's the next grant cycle?
Um, we appoint since July, usually the grants come out in July, unless you go for federal land and water conservation grant. I think they come out, um, the end of April, but those are the big grants, so like water supply protection, what large trails, like large swaths of land. SUV, you know, shared use paths, stuff like that, but I mean, we'll, we'll probably be finished before then too.
Do you think?
Alright, so, oh, go ahead Brett.
Oh, I was just one, I know it's so hard because like I'm not on camera, my apologies. Um, Bill, do you think we're on track for, it sounds like what you thi, what you think is that we're on track for one of those July?
Oh, absolutely, oh yeah, no, you'll be done long before that.
Awesome, that's awesome.
Great, okay, so, um, do we have any, do we want to scroll down and look at some of the other things, this, this list is pretty long, do we?
It's not that.
Yeah, Brett, why don't you do a sort, I'm curious about, can you do?
I tried to do a sort, it like didn't work the way.
Yeah, like, if you do a sort by acreage, that might be nice.
Oh, okay.
What we own that is large and not claimed by somebody.
We're on the same wavelength.
Yeah, cause some of these little like two tents doesn't do us anything.
Oh yeah, you can do a smallest to largest. It did it.
Oh, there we go, hey.
Nope.
It didn't.
No, it didn't.
All it did was.
For a minute.
It didn't sort all, any of the other stuff, I think.
Oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just rearranged the numbers.
It did, it did.
It sorted some of it, yeah.
Okay, there we go. No, it didn't do it.
Nope.
You know what's so funny is I use Google Sheets for work and that's the one I'm very proficient in. I don't know why it's not working, I use spreadsheets all day.
Well, maybe that's something that we can do too, is we can all look over the list and see if there's any big parcels that really jump out at you.
Yeah.
Maybe take a ride and look at them.
Right, the other way too, um, you can identify them on, um, uh, if you guy, I, I think I mentioned before Oliver is through Mass GIS and I think you can get the parcel information, um, from that, so like.
Oh, there we go, I'm sorry.
Look at that, there you go, you're all organized now.
We're good, sorry, Jess, Jess for the win, thank you Jess, it was smallest.
So if you look, so like, if you go to Oliver, um.
Want me to go down here to the bigger ones?
Yeah, go down to the bigger ones, so like, there's several here, like Oak Street.
Are all conservation.
Curious about that have some size to them that are not claimed by anybody.
But like this is.
Are these schools, are, that are on these, or?
No, there's not an Oak Street, there's definitely not one at Brook Street. Brook Street's like, that's the corner.
Oh wow.
Brook Street would be like where that, the bridge is, right, in the little river.
Correct, and we, and we bought that recently, actually.
That's right.
Yeah, so like, there's actually two of size on Oak Street, one with a 32 acres and one with 22.
Yeah, I think, I think the Brook Street, that was for flood mitigation, right Brett?
Correct, and not just that, but like water, just like to have another water supply.
Yep.
Yeah, there's some with a lot of acreage, like, you know what else I'm thinking to your point Ellen is, um, having something at zero is kind of, would be like a good, if it's not, you know, wetlands obviously. Might be a, a nice place for an open space or a recreational space.
I don't know what that, what we meant by having it at zero.
Like, I think that's the address, this is the address, Zero. I'm sorry, I should have been more clear, this is the address, so like, here is the town landfill, it's at 865 Tremont Street.
Ah, okay, I got you now.
Sorry, I should have been more.
So Zero is a corner?
Yeah, basically, yep, the start, the start of.
Or it doesn't have a mailing address, is basically what it's saying.
Oh, that could be too.
There's no mailing address.
What's interesting is that baseball field has 22.8 acres, it would be a perfect place to put a playground. Do you know what I mean?
Do you want me to highlight this Jess?
Yeah, I just look at it and the baseball fields are not on 22 acres of land.
No, but the hi, I don't know how that parcel lays out, but behind the baseball field is gas line and power lines. Yeah, and then to the left of the field, there's parking space and then they just built like, I think 15 new houses.
Oh yeah, they built a ton of houses on Oak Street.
Yeah, so we gotta look and see, you know.
Take a ride and look around.
Uh, I don't think we can tell necessarily from this list.
Yeah.
Like a map, like that map.
Now, you, does your map coincide with this list Brett?
I didn't have time to go through both, um, but I would assume give or take a few parcels. Because I don't think they were created at the same time, but they're probably both very similar.
Okay, what I'll do.
Mallory's list is one or two years old and this is a few months old, this list.
Okay, you know what I can do, I can take, I can take the list that you sent us.
Yeah.
Give, I'll give it to my GIS person Karen, who just did the infrastructure maps.
Perfect.
And I'll help her lay in all of these parcels.
Oh, beautiful.
Conservation Commission on, on the green infrastructure list and that way it'll link all the open land there.
Beautiful.
Green infrastructure possibilities.
That'd be really great.
Okay, I'll do that.
That would, that would be good. The other thing is Mallory's map that she gave me isn't like one big map. It's like on all different pieces of paper, so it's not like something we can just put on the table when we get together and spread out and look at.
Okay, so if we do this, what we'll do is just like with all the other maps we're creating for the plan, there'll be GIS maps that you can get in the database. And this one, you'll be able to plot out to any size, like the big maps I was bringing to meetings when we meet in public.
Yeah.
E-size, they were huge, so you had presentation sized maps and it'll have this specific information on it. And that way you'll have a digital copy too, an electronic copy that you guys can keep in your files.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we should move on to our next, uh, our next thing, which is the, uh, annual, the, uh, annual report.
Yeah, I didn't understand what this was, but, um, elaborate and then I'll respond, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we got this, um, answered before. So like, at the, at the beginning of every fiscal, or, uh, at the beginning of every year, there's an annual report put together. And I think my question had been, I thought it was answered, was about, um, whether or not we were supposed to be doing one of those. But because we're part of some committee, right, we don't need to?
No, so, most committees don't do them, so like, um, uh, I'm on the agricultural commission and we probably should be doing one, but last year we didn't do one, so we'll get on the ball. But these volunteer committees, I didn't, like the Human Rights Committee isn't gonna do a report. I thought that was mostly like Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, you know.
Yeah, I know how to do.
Assessors, Board of Assessors, like those. Um, however, if we do want to do one and, and it might be okay to do one, because again, you're getting your name out. People are seeing what your committee is doing and I'm happy to help with doing one if we decide. Um, I don't think it's required, but can be helpful, I guess is.
Yeah, well, it might, it might be nice to tutor on horn if we have the draft.
Well, that's, that's what I'm thinking. Also, I don't think this is until the annual town meeting is when we would do this. And if one of us, Ellen, if you come to the annual, I know you usually go to those types of things.
Yeah.
You would get up and read the report if you want.
Okay.
But we have a few months, that's not till the annual.
Okay, yeah, um, let's see here, and then we have, we have to come up with a cover photo for our open space plan. To, um, maybe if you have nice pictures of the town, we could share them and decide, or?
Oh, there are a lot of, uh, I don't know if you belong to Positively Dayton.
Uh-huh.
People posted some beautiful pictures there, but it would probably be a copyright violation if we didn't ask them if we could use their picture on our cover, so I don't know.
Yeah, we did that at work actually, we, um, we wanted to, at work, um, we wanted a picture from every town that we serve. And so, uh, that was one of the ways we got photos and we just approached the people who had photos we liked.
And what we did, so on our last annual town report for the town, we did use like a residence photo from probably one of those groups Jess, and then we contacted him and he was totally cool with us using it. And we gave him a shout out on the inside cover, that it was his photo and everything.
So do you, what kind of photo do you think would be best for us?
Yeah, something in Dayton, that's open space for sure. You know that pretty, um, you know that pretty, uh, it has pumpkins right now, so it doesn't look that pretty. But there, on Center Street, that big open space, when they have it filled with flowers, I think I have a picture of it from last spring when it was filled with flowers, it is absolutely gorgeous.
Yeah, that's Giorgio's, uh, leases that land, right?
Yeah, Giorgio's Greenhouses, yeah, they have beautiful photos.
Yeah, they probably have a lot of nice ones and also that open space on Main Street, Ellen, kind of near you. Yeah, they probably have a lot of nice ones. And also, that open space on Main Street, Ellen, kind of near you before your house, going up the hill.
Hmm.
Right on the left with the.
Yeah, that was nice.
The morning, that's also kind of pretty.
Hmm, yeah, I was looking at my own photos. I have a few I could share, but maybe maybe what we do is put something on Positively Dayton and say, if you have photos you would like to share.
You'll get so many good ones. Yeah.
I can do that.
Sweet.
Yeah, just tell them, we'll give them a shout out in the open space plan, right?
I'll make a suggestion. So when I've done that before, when people send them over Facebook, Jess, the pictures aren't as nice. So when I've found that when they email the original, the picture is it retains the original quality of the photo much better.
Okay, so we're looking for a cover picture to our open space plan.
Hmm, yep.
All right. And then if we see one, then are you part of Positively Dayton, Ellen?
Yeah, uh huh.
All right, so I'll put that out there. And if you see one, then we can contact that person and ask for them to email it and if we can use it.
Yeah, yeah, and then we can decide if it's of a quality that's, you know.
Yep.
That's usable.
Yeah, there's a few people there who like regularly post nice stuff anyway.
Yep, yeah.
And that's a good way to involve the community, too.
Absolutely.
Involve people.
And that that's awesome, because you can only use the town seal and clip art so many times. You know, if you got something that's.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, I know. You want you want people to really identify with the community. So you say, yeah, this is Dayton. I I know.
Yeah, exactly.
That's so funny and so true.
Although I do I do like your town seal there, Brett. I mean, you got some color going on.
This is actually, I had to use Mallory's account to get the meeting started. I have to get it transferred to me.
Okay, so I think we covered that. So do we have any correspondence? Brett, did you have something in mind?
No, I didn't. We didn't receive any correspondence that I know of.
I didn't receive anything. Okay, so we'll move on. And then so the last thing was about approving the minutes for the last meeting, which was the nineteenth of May. And so so do I have a motion to approve those minutes? There's only just.
I know. I'll motion to approve the minutes from May nineteenth.
I think you.
The last time we met.
That was the last official meeting. We've been meeting in between, like, yeah, living along, but yeah.
We all caught up with our minutes and agendas and things like that.
Okay.
I don't vote, Madam Chair, so you'll have to step down in second and the and vote.
Oh, I stepped down in a second? I don't understand.
Well, I'm not sure if Kevin would want to.
Right, he can't second it.
Actually, that he wasn't there for.
Yeah, I know.
abstain. Because he's illegal. He's a legal.
Oh, yeah, you could you could second it, but then I if it were me, because I wasn't, if I weren't there, I would abstain, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm confused. So I'm confused. What do I say? I have to step down first?
No, if if Kevin doesn't want to second it, you'll have to step down and second it.
Okay.
For it to get to a vote.
Kevin, are you willing to second it? And then we and then you can abstain if you want from the actual vote?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay.
This is your first official action, man. We got forward motion. This is beautiful.
So I think, don't I need a roll call vote for when we're doing it through Zoom or not?
No.
No, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And what abstention?
Oh, and then.
Kevin, are you abstaining or?
I'll abstain.
Oh, I thought you seconded it. All right.
Yeah.
He seconded it, the motion, just for it to go to a vote.
All right.
Yeah, okay. So that's so funny. That's so awkward. Okay, so we didn't have any plug input. And so I think we can adjourn, right?
Talk about our next meeting, Ellen.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm getting it myself. Okay. So let me look at the calendar here. If we did, I think we'll be up against.
So the third third Monday is the sixteenth.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
Not bad, yeah.
That'll be okay. Is that okay for that'll be fine for me, I believe.
Yeah, I don't have anything in the calendar yet, so.
Hold on, let me just look at my other calendar. Too many calendars.
When was that meeting in May?
I'm sorry.
Nineteenth.
Thank you.
Yep, that's fine. I can do that. The sixteenth at five.
All right.
Yep, that'll work. Right, so we will see you then, everybody.
Oh, you'll have to make a motion and a second to adjourn and.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the meeting is adjourned at six eleven.
How cool is this? You get to vote again. Look at that.
I know.
Practice here. Oh, we haven't had a vote in so long.
That was a spark.
It's just a luxury.
Awesome. Have a good month, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll send you that stuff.
Nice meeting with Kevin.
Yeah, and I'll send you guys that package from the ADA report.
Great.
Thank you, Kevin.
We're rolling.
Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Night, guys.